I'm Adam Clark. Councilmember Mayo?
Here.
Councilmember Mosby?
Present.
Councilmember Cordova?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Dirk Starbuck?
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here. If you'll please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's agenda is a public hearing regarding consideration of Planning Commission recommendations for approval of the comprehensive zoning code update to Title 17 of the Lompoc Municipal Code, Adoption of Resolution Number 656258 (19), Introduction of Ordinance Number 1670 (19), and Adoption of Addendum to the 2030 General Plan Environmental Impact Report. And we have Planning Manager Brian Halverson to present.
Can you get the presentation on the screen? It'll be right there. Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for your patience there as we get the slideshow going. I just wanted to express my appreciation for having a special meeting for the zoning code. We're getting there, we're getting really close. So I'm gonna go through, kinda summarize what we did in October. We did some follow-up items from the last meeting, and then we'll conclude with the rest of the review. So the meeting format tonight, just to kinda keep us focused, is to go over, as I mentioned, some of the changes on October 3rd, staff recommendations for the special event overlay, our project timeline, and some fiscal considerations, and then if there's any additional comments on the code. So, one of the key attachments in your council report, which is Attachment 4, is a redlined version of a 13-page comment letter that was passed out at the last meeting in October. We'll talk about that tonight, but I wanted to mention that we're not going to talk about every item. The items that are marked "approved," we're not gonna talk about. But the items that either had a revision or needed follow-up work, then we will. But of course, we can, you know, talk about, go back to any of those if you'd like to. We had a discussion about banners currently in our code, and as proposed, banners would require a permit. There was some concerns about trying to make that more flexible. So I came up with some new wording that basically doesn't require a fee or a permit, as long as it had certain language printed on it. And we also added "with appropriate noticing" and stored at the city's fleet yard if someone did keep it up more than 30 days. Parking for self-storage was also discussed. Staff had originally proposed a revised parking requirement for self-storage. We have someone here tonight that's interested in that section, and the council directed to take out a requirement for any parking for units, for the actual units themselves, but only require parking for the office and the caretaker portion. There are some follow-up items where they were mentioned, but staff didn't have certain information at the time, needed to coordinate with different departments, and needed to talk to our consultant. One of the departments we reached out to was Public Works, and specifically Aviation, and we asked them if they needed this section in the code, and they said they don't. So that part of the code talks about restrictions on uses that are prohibited, and those items are, like, for example, a fire hydrant. You're gonna see a fire hydrant out there. So they were okay with deleting that section. There was a discussion, small discussion, about potentially prohibiting retail over 100,000 square feet. Some cities call this a big-box ordinance, and they actually do an ordinance, but this was just a general comment. Our current code, as well as what's proposed before you this evening, does not put a restriction or a prohibition on 100,000-square-foot retail stores or spaces. Staff would caution you to put that in the code, because it would probably be wise to leave opportunities available if retailers come into town and they are over that amount. But at the same time, please provide direction tonight on how you would like to go, if you'd like to put it in the code or keep it out, a prohibition on that size. The south side overlay, we needed to go back and look at Ordinance 1566. I looked at it, looked at what was proposed in the code, and there's a little bit of wording that could probably be polished up, not very much at all, but for clarity's sake and making sure that it's just the exact language is from there and into the code. I think what we did is we just streamlined it a little bit, but we'll go ahead and just copy and paste into the zoning code from that ordinance. Metal storage containers continues to be a hot topic and came up again. So we had a couple things that were discussed and changed. We're gonna clarify in the table temporary versus permanent containers allowed in residential zones, development standards allowed in all zones, but also apply to non-residential zones. For example, but it also includes apartments, even though an apartment is a residential use, there was, seemed to be a need to include apartments. Let's see if I can... There it goes. Non-residential uses would be allowed, one container per parcel. That language, the second bullet, was already looked at. And also, we wanted to just note, as always, that, you know, anything over 120 square feet is gonna require a building permit. And that's just the table that we had, we've had for a number of meetings, and so those changes would be incorporated into their, into that table. There's other code revisions as well that I wanted to discuss real quickly. So there was a motion by the council to, when the council adopted the general plan some five years ago, the land use element specifically, you have the business park, and you have the I or the industrial zone. One has a floor area ratio of .75, one has a floor area ratio of .50. There was a need to change the floor area ratio in the industrial zone from .5 to .75. And I just wanna make sure that I bring this up, that we talked to our environmental consultant, and that actual change is not just a change to our general plan, but it needs additional environmental work that's not included in the addendum tonight. So essentially, what our consultant is working on right now is analyzing those sites, so that if those sites became more intensified, more building area, how would that affect the surrounding roadways? So we're gonna have to consult with a traffic engineer as well. So that is something that has not been included yet in the addendum. We would have to come back with that included in the addendum. As well as implementation measure 23, we had originally talked about revising it, but it's gonna be deleted. So both those changes, and actually, there's another change to talk about in a minute, needs further environmental work. And that's the other change, is the equipment rental yard is now currently prohibited in the business park zone. So that would require us to change the general plan, because right now, the general plan in the business park talks about all uses are indoors. That's an outdoor use. So we need to address that to in a revised addendum. The item of reducing lot width in the R1 zone, of course, this would be for new lots, not existing lots. It was decided that instead of 65, that 50 would be a better standard. But I wanted to clarify that we don't know if you're talking about all lots or just interior lots. I would strongly, I would strongly urge the council to not have that standard for corner lots, because a corner lot already has a setback of 10 feet. So it just doesn't leave you a lot of room to build a house if you have that really small lot. So, right now, the corner lots are supposed to be 70 feet. There's also increased maximum fence height. This Planning Commission said seven. You mentioned that you'd like eight, so that was another one. But I wanna emphasize that in the front, that would not be allowed in the front. You would still have a maximum height of three feet, so that the property wasn't basically walled or fenced in. Another item that was brought up was the transportation demand management plan, a very good comment. There was a table in there that seemed to be a little excessive, listing a lot of different items that it may be construed or interpreted, that you have to do all those items. So there was a motion to delete the table, so that's not a problem. We'll delete the table. Those were just suggestions to help out a project that, a large project that would have to do a demand management plan. There was also needed a clarification on the size of that, of that building, and that's not the land area, but that would be the building. So that would be clarified in our code to be, to specify that's a 100,000-square-foot building, not a parcel of land. Proof of legal nonconformity, this was a tough one when the Planning Commission and staff worked on it. If someone comes in to the building department or talks to planning, and they have built something, and proof needs to be shown, especially when a real estate transaction is being done, or maybe some sort of code enforcement action, they need to show proof. Staff thought 1945 was appropriate, because we determined, looking at our records, that that was actually the year that we started requiring building permits. But the council wanted to change that. There's, I guess, there's some evidence that some of the records may not always be available or found, and so they felt comfortable with the year 1965 instead of 1945. This one might need a little help from our attorney later if there's more questions, but there was some research that was given to the attorney's office regarding flexible options for nonconforming properties. This one's very tricky, it's not an easy one to, to actually, you know, say, "Okay, we should do it this way or that way," because there's a lot of different options that you can do, and a lot of cities do different, approach this differently. But essentially, we looked into some different options for nonconforming properties and structures, and the first option, which is very common, you set a time limit of 20 years. The second option would be allow nonconformity to remain unless the use changes. The property is vacant for a set period of time, for example, six months. We changed it to a year with our proposed code that's before you. And that's, or if someone does improvements to a property, that could also make them lose their nonconform, their legal nonconforming status. There's option two, is explain the staff report, I didn't want to get into it, it's pretty long, but our attorney's here, if you have questions regarding the other option. There's a lot of different scenarios of how to address this. Staff tonight would like to receive further input on the council direction on this topic, as far as what level and the specifics of how the zoning code should be addressed regarding nonconforming uses in buildings, if the current approach, which is in your ordinance tonight, is not acceptable. Staff doesn't recommend, though, that nonconforming structures and uses remain forever. The purpose of the code is to address new regulations, and so if it lasts forever, it kinda makes the public and just in general question, "Why have zoning?" The special event overlay, I know is going to be a hot topic tonight. I'm going to explain a couple things of how we approach this, and then we would be able to answer some questions, which I know there'll be lots of questions. So the council directed staff to adopt certain language that's attached in Attachment 4 that was passed out the night of the meeting. We talked to the building department, talked to the fire department. We analyzed that language, because it was passed out that night, so we didn't have a lot of time to look at it. What we had determined, after looking at it and we coordinated with the city attorney's office, was it would be very, very difficult to actually implement what you're asking us, what you're wanting to approve, and I'll just get into a couple things. That's Comet 29 in that redlined version of Attachment 4. So just quickly, a few things. I already mentioned it's difficult to implement. Those concerns are outlined in the staff report on pages 7, 8, and 9. The building and fire department are here to answer the, answer questions. But in general, you know, we saw certain glaring things, or either the staffing levels, or even potentially, but I'll let Jeff explain a little more, that potentially implementing that could put the city possibly at risk. So what we did, just for consideration, obviously, we've gotten direction from you on what to do, but we'd also like you to consider tonight revised code language for the special event overlay that staff drafted. We have reached out to people, not everybody that's here this evening, to see if this would potentially work. Of course, you know, there's always going to be agreement, you can agree and you can disagree, but I think that we have provided something that will be a good discussion topic tonight, this revised code language, that actually, the whole purpose of writing it was to address some of the concerns, and those specific concerns are implementation. We also believe that it's a business-friendly rewrite of the special event overlay with the current staff levels that we have. I'm almost done. The project timeline, I wanna emphasize that we've been working on this code for quite a while. We are running out of money. We, the consultant that we have now, basically, the only funds that we have left is essentially to print and do the final copies of the, of the code. We also have a pending deadline. There's a budget, due to the budget and also the new bills that were passed by the governor, there's gonna be more code amendments that we're gonna need to do. And so it's really important that we get this code adopted by the end of the year. Again, I already mentioned the funding. If we do need any more funding, it's gonna need to come straight out of the general plan. There's no more money in our contract, or based on the contract that we signed, there's no more money left to do any more major amendments to the code. And then the additional environmental review, I touched on that. Those changes that the council wanted to do last month came to $8,500. Somehow, some way, we found that amount, so that we could do a contract modification with the consultant and receive the direction from the council to make those changes, and analyze those changes, and make sure we come back with a revised addendum. But any more changes that are significant, they would, those monies would have to come out of the general plan. I wanna clarify regarding our recommendations. Because we don't have the addendum completed for those other items that the council wanted changed in the code, we actually don't recommend approval tonight of Resolution 6258. I apologize, I wrote that, we approve it, but we are going to need to make those changes before we bring it back. So, I think, but I'll let Jeff clarify, I think we are able to introduce it, but obviously, we can't adopt this evening. That clarifies a couple of those last slides, and that's the end of my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions at this time.
Councilmember Mosby?
Could you go back to the slide about the storage containers?
Certainly. Which one, the first slide?
You were there, go, do forward, right there, right?
Yeah, that's the table, that's the, from several meetings ago.
Okay, so is this what we're going with, or are we going with what we approved?
So that's just the very first draft. So each meeting, there's been a little bit of revision, so we make note of those, and we will update it based on the last, I wanna say, three, four meetings that we've had, will be discussed. And so some of those are the changes here on these two slides.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that that's not...
No.
You have, okay.
It's more of just a display of...
Couldn't hardly read it on here, I took a picture of it, enlarged it, and saw there's a lot of changes that are in here.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Any other questions for staff before we open for public comment or for our city attorney on any of the matters? Okay, seeing none, we will open the floor for public comment, and then we will come back and determine how we will address the open issues.
Good evening, thank you. I'd like to relinquish my time to the gentleman after me, thank you.
I'm sorry, we don't yield time to the individuals after you. You each have three minutes, and that is it, so I apologize for that, so...
Well, we've done that in the past, but okay. It'll be very difficult in three minutes to address something that was released two days ago, but I'll do the best I can. Couple administrative items today, I was able to meet with the staff, and some of my comments may be overcome by events if staff makes the changes that they indicated in today's meeting. Also, it's been told to me that certain city council members had concerns of barrels exploding. Barrels, wine barrels can't catch on fire, they can explode. That's just physically impossible. If they ever got warm enough to do that, the bung would pop, and the wine would split out of them, and wine is a, would act as a de-accelerant. So, anyway, I'm here tonight to discuss the special overlay. Once again, despite direction of the council, two days before this meeting, we have a rewrite of this portion of the code. Just as a brief refresher, the community came together and has worked facilitating wineries being able to hold events for four years. The general plan states the city should work with wineries to implement opportunities to enhance wineries' tourist opportunities. Original city staff, the hired consultant, the EDC, the Planning Commission, the chamber, all have stated goals of minimizing TUPs for wineries to hold events. In August 2016, the code said if you stayed inside the building, no TUP was required. In May 2017, the Planning Commission worked that issue and recommended no TUP. In November 2018, the Planning Commission again suggested minimizing TUPs. At that point, the new staff weighed in and unilaterally rewrote and submitted an unrevealed restricted code to the city council for approval. Ever since then, the staff has been at odds with the community on the issue, and wineries have repeatedly stated they need this to maintain profitability, and the community has repeatedly stated it is good for the town. Staff visited other cities and found that not only do they allow these type of events, they encourage them. Bulton, who allows these events, is our closest competitor, is actively luring wine industry from Lompoc. Here's an example of what every winery has received in the last couple weeks. Only in the last three months, at least three wineries have left. I provided the council with a video presentation showing dozens of examples of barrel rooms in our area being used for other than production activities. Now to the latest code. If you could turn to Attachment 18, it will simplify the discussion.
You're more than welcome to return when we actually take up item, that is, that particular thing, and speak to those issues.
I provided the council with a video presentation showing dozens of examples of barrel rooms in our area being used for other than production activities. Now the latest code, if you could turn to Attachment 18, it will simplify the discussion. D1C was specifically written because the present building plans and approvals are based on barrel rooms being production areas. This clause was added by the wine community specifically because we wish to be safe and we recognize those limitations. Since all wineries planned to date will be based on production, to be able to meet clause D1B, every winery will have to hire an engineer, open a building permit, probably go through a CUP, and try to convince building department that this is acceptable. This will probably cost on the order of $10,000 to $15,000. Roughly, no winery will do this. Or, every winery will have to do TUPs, as was demonstrated by our TUP. This takes six months and about $3,000 to $4,000, and they have to do it over and over again every year. This is just one of the area's discussions with Christie today, and agreed to take out the references to the standard TUP process and make it clear that this was a planning-only TUP process, which would be less costly and more ministerial in nature. If left as is, no wineries can afford to do that. So what will most likely happen is that they will begin to look around for the cities and the facilities that will allow them to run your business. See what you've been handed. In the spirit of compromise, again, we have taken what was released only two days ago and are providing you rewrites that makes this acceptable to the wine community. Based on the lawyer's evaluation, the staff report, we believe this will pass legal review. Here's a copy of the latest submittal from the city staff suggested redlines I will briefly discuss. Specifically, baseline requirements, rewrite of clause B to recognize that this is an alternative use of the facility, and that assembly activities may occur in an area where manufacturing does not occur, as defined in clause C. Temporary use permit changes. Adding minor changes to configuration are to be tracked and maintained by the applicant and are available for the city staff to review. This is the area that we felt and the staff felt could be clarified. Adding the process steps to avoid confusion, and new staff bringing in new requirements, this is an area, this is an area that if the TUP process is streamlined through clarification in the code, might be acceptable. C, adding the ability of the applicant to get an administrative renewal if the conditions facility have not changed. This is another area that the staff felt could be agreed to with additional words. In closing, it has been suggested that my only interest here is for business, but since I already have a TUP, I am fine. I am interested in making Lompoc prosperous. I am making it easier for businesses to execute profitable companies and nonprofits to succeed here. It has also been suggested that the reason I am so biased that these items is 'cause what I went through to obtain my TUP. I am told that won't happen again. My response to this is that if city staff changes and no one have to go through this, what we went through. So let's get this right, so the next city staff person that thinks they know best does not put some more poor schmuck like me through this again. Thank you for your time, what you have done to make the city friendly to the wine community, and I'm hopeful that we will clear a few issues remaining, and we can move to a more profitable endeavors.
Good evening, my name's Lori Tamora with a planning consulting firm, Urban Planning Concepts, here tonight to support some of the changes that have been moved forward by the staff and the council. The items that we're most concerned about is the floor area ratio and the industrial designation. It is something that will have a great benefit to a particular project we're working on, on the property on A and Chestnut. We're ready to submit an application, but because it retains the I designation, the floor area ratio is important. We hope that that process will move forward quickly, and we support staff's endeavors in moving that request forward, particularly on one project, but throughout the city. The second item that we brought forth to you was the issue of parking for a mini-storage property, and we've been working with the building department, fire department, and obviously, planning staff. obviously, planning staff with driveway road widths that allow parking throughout the facility, but not have designated strike parking. So, the staff suggested wording for the parking for self-storage. The first line, we agree with. The second line, which says units with direct exterior access do not require additional parking. Those are referring to the roll-up doors in each storage unit. This particular unit also, or project also, has interior units in a controlled environment. And so, what we would suggest is that the wording be changed in this particular line that says "storage unit" and then delete the phrase "with direct exterior access." Just say "storage units do not require additional parking." Just change that provision. Everything else, we agree with. We are meeting the fire department's requirements for road width so that parking can happen and does not adhere, you know, along those drive aisles and does not deter fire department access. And we have 30, you know, 26 and 30-foot wide drive aisles. We just want to make sure that we're not getting, we don't want to have designated parking for the mini-storage, which is what most miniStorage has. So, we thank you very much for this consideration and with the minor changes.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Brian and I have been trying to resolve one teeny little issue with regard to the storage containers, and I think this wording gets it done and I believe he's comfortable with it. Just ask you to incorporate that in one of your many motions tonight. With regard to this process, I think it's not very balanced for the staff to take four weeks to draft and comments and accumulate documents and then download two inches on us and the council that has to be read in two days. You know, I'm not comfortable that I read everything and understood everything and I consider myself fairly knowledgeable. So, in the future, I think the council needs to require a little more lead time because I'm sure you all are struggling with it too. I disagree with the council, with the staff's conclusion that we should hurry up and pass this before the state laws take effect because, as it was mentioned, we'll just have to change our zoning ordinance anyway because we have to be compliant with state law. I don't think rushing to a conclusion with an incomplete document is the way to go. I liken it to passing this zoning ordinance based on perhaps 50 pages of content changes. Makes about as much sense as when Congress passed the Affordable Care Act and Speaker Pelosi said, "We gotta get this passed so we can read it later." Yeah. Couple random things. I was here in 2004-ish when the council passed the limit of 100,000 square feet, which somewhere along the way got lost. I still support that. I don't really have enough time to give you the five-minute story, but suffice it to say that a council long ago discussed it at great length and passed it. I'm certainly opposed to a 20-year sunset clause as the staff on non-conforming uses as staff notes, as that deadline gets closer, people start to get awfully excited. I kind of brought this up and all I was asking for was that the timeline for the loss of use be moved from six months or 18 months to three years because particularly in the industrial zone and in some commercial uses, those properties can take quite a bit of time to reoccupy. I hope this evening that the council will answer the staff's questions, make the changes that you wish, and bring the ordinance back in January with a clean copy. I hope you will also authorize additional funds tonight that are adequate for the creation of that clean copy. If we give them another 25 grand and we get a good document, isn't that better than giving them no money and getting a not-so-good document? Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Lompoc. I'm a little bit concerned on the temporary use permit because reading it in detail and the definition of what a temporary use is, I would consider that there are many events that we currently don't classify as temporary use permits, but as defined, actually are. Chamber events, for example, that occur where there is music, food, and assembly would no longer be able to occur in certain buildings because they would exceed that building's occupancy. I can think of something recently that was in the paper, the big feed at a business. I can think of maybe the Boys and Girls Club, events that may be impacted. It also states that the, by incorporating some of the code of fire and building, you govern both indoor and outdoor. We had the big event for the after game. So, I'm looking this and I'm not the expert, staff is, but it does kind of bring up some red flags that by doing one thing, we're actually encompassing others that might have some pretty detrimental impacts on other community events. So, I would like that to be addressed before a decision be made and that taken into consideration. Also, I thought I had a recollection when we first started many, many years ago with the consultant being very explicit and stating to be cautionary in trying to include building and fire codes. This is a planning document. It is subject to planning review and although I respect the building code and the fire code, we convolute what we are trying to do when we tried to blend the two together. I don't know the reason under, then I understand staff is concerned that somebody might come and have an expectation to be able to do something and then go to fire and building and then not be able to. But that's not the purview of planning. Planning is to ensure that it meets the zone, the occup, and the particular uses for that area. Occupancy limits and how a building is used is fire and building. It's how it always has been and I know that that's been stressed over and over. So, just a couple of concerns, take those into consideration and make your decision with caution. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. My name's Philip Carpenter. I'm the director of membership at Santa Barbara Ventners, nonprofit organization that helps promote and protect the wine area here. I'm here to, first off, thank Mr. Bridge for keeping us all in the loop of what's going on and really helping us out to keep us up to date. I'm really here just to support our Ventners here on the Lompoc side. I also want to remind you how special this area is here. There's only a handful of places in the world that grow the grapes that grow in your backyard here and a very big portion of that wine is made within your city lines. We're talking legacy winemakers. I mean, we have a couple in the room. Kathy Joseph of Fiddlehead Cellars. We have Rebecca and Peter Work of Amplo Cellars. These are people that have been here for a long time and they aren't going anywhere. They are legacy people. I'm afraid these aren't major corporate entities, though. They do not have a massive budget. These costs will affect their day-to-day operations. They are truly your ambassadors for the people that come here. I mean, I'm a perfect case study. I came here in 2008 thinking Napa wine was the best wine in the world and I met people like Peter and Kathy and here I am today. I mean, this is a truly, truly special place and I just ask that you, and plead with you, that you help them out, not handcuff them, because they will only help you in the long run to bring more people here. I thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor. Oh, I'm sorry, my first time up here. Good evening, mayor, members of council. My name's Michelle Ball. Many of you know, my husband and Jeremy and I own a small business that supports the wine industry with graphic design and photography services. But prior to starting our business, I was the tasting manager at Longoria Wines and before that, I worked for many years at Boutique Wineries in Los Salivos. In addition, our business has allowed us the opportunity to glean valuable insight on the inner workings of our local wine community, as well as travel to other destinations that are doing really well and supporting their wine industry, not just Napa Valley and Paso Robles, but places like Lowdy and Sebastopol and Walla Walla, Washington. As many of you know, direct-to-consumer is the, traffic is the lifeblood for most boutique wineries and with so many producers in Santa Barbara County, it's really hard to compete as it is. This includes pickup parties for wine club members, barrel tastings, live entertainment, all these are experiences that customers are looking for and deciding where they want to go and visit. And if any of you have ever worked in special events, you know that the margins are slim to none. These events are strictly done to maintain a connection to the consumer, to show that their consumers are valuable to them and they're important to them. These are not money-making events, usually. They also support local musicians and artists, so they're very valuable to our economy. Now, if the winery is located on a pretty vineyard, that makes their job a lot easier and there's plenty of wineries nearby that offer that. But Lompoc does not benefit from those visitors. Lompoc benefits from those visitors coming into Lompoc, visiting our wineries, eating at our restaurants, staying in our hotels. By making it more difficult for wineries to hold such events, everyone loses and Lompoc's economy suffers. Last month, the council agreed with the winery's decisions for the special event overlay zone. The council agreed that they don't want to make it more difficult for wineries to do business in Lompoc. You asked city staff to adopt their recommendations and wineries were pleased and it seemed like a done deal. But today, everyone received word that city staff had updated the overlay with new language and one of the things that jumped out to me was the event cannot exceed the post-maximum occupant load, no problem, or the approved occupant load for any room as approved on the building plans. And this new verbiage opens a whole new can of worms that may, in effect, just make it a lot more difficult and costly for those wineries once again. For people like me who have not been involved in local politics, this action seems a little bit suspect. Unless there's something I'm missing, it seems like staff hoped the new copy would slide under the radar since on the surface, it doesn't sound all that different, but it is. And if not for a few vigilant people keeping the industry up to speed, many businesses would have had no idea that they needed to show up yet again for another city council meeting. That's all I've got to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Seeing no one else rise, we'll close general public comment on these matters and go back to the list of issues that were brought to us by staff and try and work our way through those as a way to answer the outstanding questions and move this document forward as best possible. When we get to an item, we will provide an opportunity to, again, provide public comment on that item, but I know there are a lot of you here that might not be able to stay for as potentially long as this might go, so I wanted to make sure everyone had a chance to speak as early and often as possible. So, I believe that the first item that was in the presentation asked regarding banners. Were there any clarification that staff needed from us regarding the banner language?
No, we do not.
Okay. The next was the self-storage parking, and I believe we did have public comment on that requesting that we consider eliminating the, I wrote my notes somewhere, the line that says "with direct access," to have that eliminated. I believe that was the only request we had during a public comment. Does council have any questions or concerns regarding that issue before we make a recommendation or open for public comment again on that? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to make another public comment on that item?
Again, Lori Tamora, and thank you very much for considering this item. And again, the wording would be "storage units do not require additional parking." Very explicit, very clear. Thank you.
Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment on that and bring it back to council for consideration. I'm willing to consider that change. Do I have agreement?
I'll have a second.
And a third?
Third.
Awesome. Do we need anything further than that? Nope, awesome. Thank you, Councilmember Mosby.
Just maybe some quick discussion. Was staff okay with that verbiage?
Yes, we are.
All right. The next item that was in the presentation was airport overlay. Did that need any feedback?
Nope, we're just recommending that to be deleted.
So, it was recommended that we delete that. Do you need our approval for that deletion? Yes, not ahead. So, any comments from the public on this matter? Seeing no one rise, I'll bring it back to council. Any discussion by council? Seeing no questions, I will ask for support on this change.
I'll second.
Third. All right. We have three in agreement and I see a head nod, so we're moving on to retail over 100,000 square feet. Is this something council would like to provide direction to staff on? Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, I'd like to go along with staff recommendation on that, not to restrict anything over 100,000 square feet.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this matter, other than the one that was presented originally? Seeing no one rise, I will bring that back. Any other questions, concerns regarding this? Councilmember Mosby.
The public comment did reference something. Is there a way that we can go back to minutes somehow? I guess that's probably the only way to find it, to see if there was something that came about at that time. I guess we could always change it in the future if that did come forward.
Public comment, I believe, said they supported the 100,000-square-foot ban, is what I have in my notes.
Right, you're not supporting the ban, I don't think, Councilmember Vega?
No.
What I'm saying is, public comment also referenced that they thought that it had been passed already by council.
Oh.
A time around 2004, that it was banning anything over 100,000. Saying if there was a document that could arise, I guess, in the future, or proof could be shown, we could always revisit it. Correct?
That's correct.
Yes, we can direct this clerk to see if they can find it, but we could go ahead and move forward, I guess, do I need to direct the clerk?
Is it something you want to have verified or do you want to...
Yeah, I think we should, we should look for it. I can always make that comment request outside council, but I guess I need two other people to make that. Clerk, do I need other? To see if it's there? But I'm gonna go, I'll go along with Councilmember Vega's statement, is that if we can find, because I don't want to have this stop the whole process.
It's basically a council request, so you can do that right now with two other votes or you can wait until later.
So, do we have two others supporting finding that documentation?
I will support it, but I want this motion to move forward regardless.
Yeah.
If we bring it back, if you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck?
Yeah, I'll concur with that.
Okay, so, we have the, move this forward with accepting staff recommendation not to have 100,000 square feet limitation and to request staff to find and verify whether or not there was a denial of 100,000 square foot in the prior, prior year, potentially 2004. That is all one motion. I saw three supporting that. Yes, Councilmember Starbuck? Okay, so, there's your support for that. Okay. Next item. Were there any concerns with south-side overlay? Were there any concerns with south side overlay you needed confirmed?
No concern from staff.
Okay. Any requirement from us? Other than the statement that it will be incorporated?
We just need a vote or a second and a third on those changes.
Okay. I'll move to accept those changes.
I'll give you a second to incorporate that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay. So we have three on that one. Metal storage containers. Any questions that need answered on that one? Councilmember Mosby.
Did staff have an opportunity to review?
Mr. Lynn?
Yeah, Mr. Lynn.
Yeah, I did. He emailed it to me, and I have looked at it. The only concern I had was the floor area ratio that he suggested. I mentioned that most properties in town do not encumber their property by 50%. So basically, it's not really a standard if everybody can do it. Or a limitation, sorry. It's not a limitation if everyone can do it. It's really up to the decision of the council if they want to see more of those metal storage containers in town, because that's essentially what you're going to see in the industrial, the business park, and open space. But it's also acknowledged that the example that he gave me was a property that has maybe a very small building on it. Wouldn't be able to take advantage of the maximum of five, because it's a very small structure and you need at least 14,000 square feet to start having additional containers. So it's really up to the council. I guess I just wanted to express the concern regarding that floor area ratio.
I can think of at least one city parcel that probably has a couple of containers on it that has a very small building on it, so it'd actually be advantageous, something that's already going on with the city. There's probably more than that. I mean, a lot of what we're trying to do is the cat's already out. We're trying to not start chopping a bunch of people that didn't allow to happen for 30 or 40 years.
Good point, especially regarding parks. I guess that would be a good example, because parks a lot of times might just have like a little restroom building or a snack bar or something like that. So, good point.
Okay, so I think that we don't see any problem with adding this verbiage into the document as well? So motion approved. Well, did you want to public comment, or?
Yeah, any public comment to contribute to this particular item?
John Lynn, Long Poak resident. So I want to apologize. I didn't catch this problem back in the beginning when we were doing storage containers. Somebody brought it to my attention. And I surveyed a large number of parcels in town that had small buildings and large parcels. And this formula was created to match basically how they're being used today and have been used for many years, including parks. So it was an oversight on my part at Square One. I appreciate you guys moving it forward. Thank you.
Any other public comment on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Mosby, you still have the floor.
Just motion to move forward with the public comment amendment added?
Mayor, for the benefit of the public, could we read what the change is? Because I don't know if that's been read.
Sure. The recommended is for parcels in the industrial, business park, and open space zones, which have a floor area ratio of less than 50%. Up to five storage containers are allowed per acre and are prorated for parcels larger or smaller than an acre.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So we need a second and a third?
I give a second.
I have a second. Do I have a third? No, I need a third.
I'll be the third.
All right. And we have a third. All right. Next item in the presentation was deleting implementation measure 23 visiting far .75 NI district. Do you need...
So I guess the only thing, Mayor, that I'd like to mention is I think the decision has already been made to approve that, but I just want to make sure that, you know, there's a contract modification that staff needs to do, additional environmental analysis. And so it's more of just giving a report to the council so they know the full ramifications of their decision that we're basically following.
So when we get to the end of the list, when we're talking about additional expense, this is one of the items that you're referring to that will require the additional expense?
Right, but it's my understanding, although Mr. Albro can correct me if I'm wrong, that that can be done administratively, that fee. So it doesn't need your blessing, per se, for more money. But administratively, we're going to do a contract modification with the consultant.
Okay. The allow equipment rental yard in the business park district. And that's also an additional revision that will require the addendum to be reviewed. So that was just notification of that happening?
Correct.
And then the reduced lot width to R1, that one you did want clarification on, didn't you? Because you were asking about corner lots.
Correct.
All right, so the issue is we recommended changing the standard to 50 feet, down from 65. That had been in the original updated document. And staff is looking for clarification if the intent was to also include corner lots, which they recommend we actually do a 70-foot minimum. Councilmember Vega.
I think, to be fair, I'd like to see that we uphold that, the 50-foot to include corner lots. There's different sized corner lots. So there are large ones and there are smaller, more medium-sized. So I'd like to have us leave this at 50 feet instead of the 70 feet. And that's a 50-foot minimum.
Councilmember Mosby.
Can staff clarify why they requested 70-foot to be the minimum requirement?
Certainly. It was just a matter of the setback requirement on a corner lot. The side yard setback is actually greater. It's 10 feet instead of five. And so by the time you do a 10-foot and another five, that's 15. And you have a 50-foot lot, that's only 35 feet to work with. It's not a lot. So obviously, that's going to shrink the size of the house. But if you're comfortable with that, you want to have that flexibility for new subdivisions that come into town, then that would be the route to go. But if you want to have more room on a lot for a home, then we would suggest keeping the corner at 70 feet.
So it would actually make... We're kind of quarter lots. Some ways are more of a luxury. Some people really like it because you have more access in yardage. You'd actually be negating that by making it 35 feet. So you're not really giving them 50-foot, you're only giving them 35. So maybe the staff's recommendation would actually...
I think anytime you... If I can speak, I'm not sure.
If Councilmember Mosby has yielded the floor, I will give it to you.
Yeah, I don't like the restriction. And, you know, you're assuming that it's going to be a regular house. And then for new lots, you're assuming that there's not going to be an ADU, which could be compliant and fall right within that. It may not be compliant for a full-size home, but the same token, any kind of restriction that's unnecessary is the reason that I recommend that.
Any other questions or discussion, my counsel, before I open for public comment? Councilmember Cordova.
So I was... My question would be, these are just minimums, though, right? The developer can choose to do greater.
That's correct, but obviously, if they did greater, that's going to even make the house, you know? I mean, you would allow to have more room, but a lot of times, they're going to do the minimum. But yeah, the developer could choose to do a larger lot if they'd like to.
Mr. Vega, do you still have comments for staff?
Yeah, and to Councilman Mosby's comment there, these are minimums. So it allows someone to do something above it, should their needs be part of this. That's the reason I am recommending that we stay with the 50.
I'll open the floor for public comment on this matter.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident of Long Poak. I would probably agree with Councilman Vega, only in that there are many types of housing. There's been developments in this area that definitively have lot sizes that are smaller than 50. We have zero lot line developments. The trend now is for more compact design, not big urban sprawl. So that's just a new consideration to take in place. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment on that matter. We have a motion on the floor to leave the corner lots at 50-foot minimum requirement. Do you have any other questions, or do I have a second and a third for that? Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm going to go ahead and I'll go with Councilmember Vega's recommendation on that. I mean, I think that, like you say, the developer, if he wanted to build bigger homes, will put a bigger lot. I mean, the flexibility is there, but at least we do have a standard.
And I need a third.
Oh, third.
And we have a third. All right. If I read the next item correctly, this was just letting council know that when moving the eight-foot height to non-industrial and industrial, it still limits the front setback, and we can't recommend a change there. Is that correct?
I'm so sorry. Could you repeat that, Mayor?
My interpretation of this slide is you were just letting us know that the height limit for the front setback and street-side back would remain at maximum of three-feet height, even though we had moved the maximum fence height to eight feet.
Correct.
Okay. So this doesn't require any feedback. It was just notification?
Correct.
Thank you. Transportation management plan, this one also appears to be requiring a clarification on the 100-square-foot, referring to the building area, or just notification? This looks like information you were just sharing with us.
Just sharing, correct.
Okay.
But we did receive direction from the council to delete the table in that section. So, but I don't think, Mr. Malavi, we don't need to vote on that. It was already given direction to us.
Yeah, I think that was already voted on at the last meeting.
Okay. The next slide is proof of legal nonconformity. And I believe you were just verifying the change that we had recommended and what you had put in place?
Correct.
And then the next is the flexible option for nonconforming properties, which was far more complicated as to what our options would be on that. And we did have some public comments stating not agreeing with a 20-year sunset. So this would be a discussion by council and potential recommendations.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just launch into this one, it seems like from the public comment tonight and the discussions after the staff report was put together, that maybe what the council was really trying to get to with this was to take the one-year time period that we have currently in the zoning code update that says if a nonconforming use is abandoned for one year, then it cannot reestablish and extend that to three years for the industrial zones. If that's what the council would like to do, that is completely legally fine, and it's an easy change to make. If you'd like to do it only for the industrial zones, that's fine. If you'd like to do it for any other zones, that'd be fine, too.
Okay. Councilmember Mosby.
I like the three-year component, but a question about improvements are done on the nonconforming property. Is that something that has to be there as well? You kind of want people to be allowed to change their roof if there's a legal nonconforming use. You don't want to say, well, you can't put a new roof on. You're going to let your place rot apart, squeeze you out of business.
Yes, the current zoning code update that we have... Sorry, that's confusing. So not the current zoning code, but the zoning code update that we have right now allows a nonconforming structure to be enlarged or extended to occupy a greater area of land or building floor area, provided that the expansion or the enlargement complies with the updated code. And then it allows a single-family dwelling, or duplex, or multifamily structure of triplexes, or larger and non-residential structures to be repaired and improved. I think that's what you're talking about, is repair and improvement of a nonconforming structure. Those repairs and improvements are allowed up to 50% of the current market value of the structure. So... That's the standard that we have in the zoning code update right now. So if the council would like to modify that 50% rule, then you may. Or you can leave what we have in the code right now.
But what's the time limit of vacancy currently?
The time limit of vacancy currently is one year.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm going to throw a scenario. Years ago, we downzoned. We took a lot of industrial property and we made it R3. And we made some people's property far less valuable. So that property went, and staff made a determination that six months, that now it wasn't even used as industrial, so now it can't be used for anything. Why can't we take properties like that and give them an MU zone like we did Cypress and Seventh? We can do whatever we want in the mixed use at this point, then. We were able to do it in two months for the housing authority. Well, we've been 10 years with one person that can't do anything with their property.
Councilmember Starbuck, we can take any property that the council would like and zone it to MU. We would just need to know which properties the council would like to do.
I bet you can guess. It's on Laurel. But I've been told we can't do anything. It's going to stay R3, because spot zoning is illegal. We couldn't get a definition of spot zoning in the zoning ordinance either. So what you're telling me is, is we can go ahead and give this person an MU, change the MU designation to go ahead and say that industrial is going to be allowed there and try and reestablish some type of value for these people.
If you're talking about a particular parcel...
Yes.
We can change that parcel to MU. I do know the issue that you're talking about with spot zoning. And based on recent changes in the law regarding spot zoning, my analysis is that if we did that with that parcel, it would not be spot zoning.
Exactly. I mean, we're spot-zoned everything the city does. We have Frick Springs spot-zoned up Magalita Canyon. It's okay for us, and it's okay if staff wants to have something spot-zoned. But we don't never call it out and make it part of our zoning code. I guess it's my thing with the legal nonconforming or nonconforming when we, by the stroke of a pen, devalue people's properties.
Councilmember Starbuck, was there a request in there?
That was just a statement, because I don't think that this issue's going to go away with me for a while.
I believe the city attorney was saying that you could make a recommendation, since we're in the zoning.
This would be a very specific spot zoning, then, at this point. It was something we do not want to include with the zoning code.
All right. Councilmember Cordova.
I don't think that the option one is necessary, the 20-year setting a time limit on that. It wasn't part of the last discussion, so I think that that is not necessary. And I think changing it to three years was what my intention was.
Okay. Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, the one-year is really too restrictive for vacancies. And it puts stress on people that do take a little bit longer for these different uses. For instance, if you had a residential slash commercial property that the business went out of business and all of a sudden, it's on the market and it stays on the market for an extensive amount of time, they could lose that use because it's vacant, so ultimately, the value would diminish also. I think one of the issues is, or at least the three years, but I think what we have with legal nonconforming use, it also should be looked at, that it should be left indefinitely for whoever's there. for whoever's there, and I understand the triggers are vacant property. For example, you could have triggers there, but have it legal nonconforming indefinitely. But for instance, if somebody, a change of occupancy resets the clock, also remodel of 50% or more, which is on the standard of up to 50%, would be a couple of variables that we could look at where it doesn't put the city at risk or leave something forever. So it's just one of those suggestions. But I think one year is too restrictive, for sure. But I would like possibly, Mr. Halverson, if you could give us a little comment on something that would be left indefinitely, because basically, if someone stayed there forever, it's gonna be there forever. So maybe you could tell me what the difference is, and why you would be against indefinite, with some caveats and restrictions, and a couple of exceptions.
Well, I'm probably gonna lean on Jeff for that.
Under the zoning code update that we have proposed, if zoning is changed out from under somebody's property, they are allowed to stay there indefinitely, as long as they continue with the use, and as long as they don't do an expansion of more than 50% of the value, or a repair of more than 50% of the value. They are allowed to stay there forever. What we meant by indefinitely is, staff doesn't want someone to be able to abandon their use for 15 years, and then be able to come back and start that, reestablish that use again. So that's where the one-year versus three-year time period comes in.
I got you. Thanks for that clarification, but I would be in support of going at least up to three years on that, instead of the one year. Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
And I think it has to be a notice to start. It can't just be, there has to be an initiation, right?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna adopt a zoning code that requires a use to terminate in a certain number of years, when you change the zoning underneath it, then you have to give notice of that. But if you're gonna allow grandfathering rights and allow them to stay indefinitely unless they change their use, then you don't have to give notice.
But again, if there's a vacancy, the one property that Councilmember Starbuck's talking about is, city staff said that he had discontinued his use, and the gentleman said, "I have not discontinued his use. I'm not using my lights. I don't pay electric bill because I don't need lights. But I still use my property for what I've been using it for." And I don't know when there was a time when it was filed and noticed.
Noticing on that doesn't really work, because the city doesn't know when someone stops using their use, so the city can't give notice, and the person doesn't have an incentive to give notice to the city. So noticing doesn't really work. It's just, you use whatever evidence you have at the time to determine when that use stopped, and it can go to court a lot of times and get decided there when the use stopped.
And I think in this particular parcel that Councilmember Starbuck was talking about, I believe that is sometimes four or five years ago, and I think the council did say, "Give the person his zoning back." So I don't know why it happened and why it didn't finalize, but I think that was recommended quite a while ago.
Councilmember Vega.
You know, not talking about a particular parcel, but I noticed the trigger is, normally when you have a mixed use, or something that's commercial versus residential, or the business goes out, usually the trigger's gonna come in because someone didn't pay their tax certificate, or their utilities got turned off, and all of a sudden, it's a trigger that somebody comes in here and finds out, well, hey, you haven't had utilities on for what used to be six months, what was basically what was set out in public. But usually, those are the triggers that tell you, and that's not about a specific property. That's something that is basically residential/commercial, or any commercial property.
Thank you for that. Any public comment on this matter?
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident Lompoc. I may encourage you to maybe add a couple of more years, because if you just look at our Old Town, we've had some vacancies in excess of three years. I can go up into LoopNet, which is the commercial site for real estate, and I can show you many instances where buildings sat vacant. Some of these buildings are very specifically designed for very specific uses, which then render them unusable. I understand if there is a significant conflict in the zoning between what the rezone was, where that, where it'd be important not to let a nonconforming use exist. But if somebody were to simply not be able to lease out their building or utilize the building for this very same use for an extended period of time, more than three years, it's, you may just render the building useless to that person. So I, there's happy medium, but the evidence shows that there had been vacancies longer than three years. So you just might want to reconsider that to maybe five years. That would seem to be a scope. And if it's the same use, maybe some type of exception, because if it's an existing use, that, I mean, the purpose of zoning is to prevent conflict. If the existing nonconforming use is not creating a significant conflict, I don't see why it would hurt to do that, especially in the time where we're seeing more and more mixed use, and more uses that are very close in nature. So I could see it if you have industrial housing, but if you're talking some type of retail use with some type of office use, or a residential use with maybe a retail use, I mean, there's a lot of changes in zoning happening. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council John Lynn. So I recommended the three-year number. I'm certainly, if you wanted to make it four or five, I'd be even happier, but I think three at least gives somebody a reasonable opportunity. This council also did make a major change in our ordinance, which is that anyone can come in for a CUP. So if you have a building on which your use has been lost, you're not completely dead in the water, you still have one door you can try to step through, and, you know, at that point, you would have to substantiate the fact that your use is no more damaging than, you know, what it was intended for. But to avoid putting people, a lot of people, through that process, three years is a good solution. Five years would be even nicer. And city attorney read the text of our ordinance, the rest of the text of our ordinance is good and correct and does not require a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment on that and bring it back to council. There was a recommendation for three years. Councilmember Cordova.
Well, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say that if we could motion to accept it with the three years and the, I would be okay with that, and eliminating the 20 years.
Okay. So I don't believe the 20 years exists in our current ordinance. We're just extending it from one year to three years, which is the recommendation by Councilmember Cordova. I'll give you a second.
I just want to be clear, Mayor, that this is, is this for all zones, or is this only the industrial zone? Because we had talked before about only the industrial zone.
So clarification.
Remind me, what is it on the other zones?
Right now, in the code, it's one year in all the zones.
Okay. And I think that in the last discussion, we were referring to only industrial zones. I do agree with that. We were discussing only industrial zones.
Councilmember Mosby.
I think you heard public comment relating to other zones. I think it's not just industrial. In fact, industrial zones are one of the hottest properties right now. It's mostly the other commercial zones are slow to fill, so I would think that you'd want to, I'd give you a third if you'd modify to go all zones with the three-year.
That's fine. The only reason why the discussion was only placed on the industrial is because those are harder to fill a lot of times, in the sense of less ability to use, and so a retail space is a lot more in demand than an industrial zone in most cases, but I'm okay with that.
Okay. We have a first, a second, and a third on that motion, and the addendum, Councilmember Vega.
Yes, and I support that, but my examples were for other zones, because those are the ones impacted by the same time limit. Even though we were talking about industrial zones, it doesn't reference and doesn't encompass all the uses that could benefit from that three-year expansion of time. So I'd support it, even though you probably already have your third. Is that correct? So I'm just over here wasting air, but I want you to know, okay, that all those zones should be included. Thank you.
That was the change to the motion by Councilmember Cordova, was to allow it for all zones and be three years, and I seconded that, and then Councilmember Mosby was the third on that. Any other clarification for staff? None? Okay. All right. The next topic is special event overlay. Questions for staff regarding the proposed changes to the special event overlay?
I think we'll just launch into this one as well, Mayor, if we could. First of all, I want to be clear that staff's recommendation, recommended language, attachment 18, has a bit of a typo or some language that was not the intent that staff had. So in the very, very first line, number one, it says standards for special events. What we really intended with this is the standards for special events that would be exempt from having a TUP. So I'm recommending that the council add to that line, standards for special events that are exempt from a temporary use permit. So what that will do is, then the whole document reads that if an event complies with A, B, and C, that's less than 72 hours, it complies with the current posted maximum occupant load for the currently approved occupancy, or the approved occupant load for any room, as approved on billing plans. And if it complies with C, no manufacturing activity shall occur in the spaces being used for the events, then the event does not need to have a TUP. If it doesn't comply with any of those, then the event would need to get a TUP under number three here. And I think that Ms. Alakon has items to talk about on number three, including what the cost of getting a TUP would be under this new scheme.
So the only other thing I wanted to kind of back up a bit is that it's been brought to my attention that it may be helpful to remove on item D, I, or 1B, that the event cannot exceed the posted maximum occupancy, and just remove posted out of that content, just for clarity. And then if we drop down now to kind of my section, is number three, it's a lot of sections referenced in there, consistent with section blah, and talking about section blah, and on and on. So what I recommended, really the intent of staff here was to simplify and streamline this, but maintain the spirit and intent of what was provided to us. And so we would just be stating, it shall require the approval of a special event temporary use permit, which is gonna be a little bit different product and process than a temporary use permit. And then it'll say, following that, "Under the process described below." So then if you move down, you'll see the process for a special event TUP, and the first thing it says, "A special event TUP application is submitted with a description of the types of events, types of configurations of the facility and occupancies for planning, division, review, and approval." That was something that was recommended that be added in there, so we're okay with that. If it makes things easier and more clear for everybody, we're happy to do that, to get to where we need to be. And then I think, and I'll let Jeff chime in here, but it was brought to my attention that it might be a little bit redundant in the indemnification clause on number 14, second to last page, or, yeah, number 14, that we don't have to include the indemnif, I can't say that word, but I'll let you decide if that can be removed or not. It was just a question that if it was redundant or not, since it's our general clause.
Are you proposing to remove the entire number 14?
Just the, that one component, I believe.
Just the word indemnify?
Councilmember Mosby, that was one of his suggestions, so maybe I'll allow him to elaborate on that for us.
My question was, how many other businesses do we make put a policy, basically listing the city additionally insured on the insurance policy? It seems to me like we're stepping out in, to some level, of discrimination against a certain group by asking them to attach them on their insurance policy. We're already going through the permitting process that says, hey, you can't break the law. If you break the law, obviously, we've told you not to break the law. You go to court, the court's gonna say, hey, you broke the law. The city's told you not to do it. We've kind of backed off quite a bit already and reduced the city's liability, because we told them you had to go by the law.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Mosby. I don't, I don't see in here where it requires us, where it requires the applicant to put the city as an additional insured.
I'm just qualifying it as a, basically, we're stating this, you know, we're having it, yeah. We're stating that we have to defend, protect, and hold harmless the city, its officers.
Okay.
I don't think we do that for any other businesses.
We require that for any business that gets any kind of a planning permit. I don't think we require it for businesses that are allowed as of right, if they just need a business license.
So people with a CUP have to get this?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a standard condition.
I can think of one business that I don't believe has a policy, like, probably one of the most dangerous businesses in town, doesn't have a policy holding us harmless to a level like this. And of course, they don't have to have a CUP to operate what they're doing, but, so even in a...
The reason that they don't need to have that is because the city doesn't have to issue them a permit. So it's protecting the city from liability, because we are allowing the use to occur by issuing the permit, and so a plaintiff could sue the city, saying, "You allowed this use to occur if some damage happened."
We allow businesses to occur if they get a business tax certificate.
Yes, but that's not a grant of a right to operate. That's just collecting a dollar amount from them.
So we're sticking our neck out a little bit further, is what you're saying, because we're granting this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'll see what public comment is. I just, I've had other CUPs, I've never had to go to this level in other areas.
Any questions for staff regarding these changes? Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, as far as the occupancy levels, maybe for Christie or Jeff, regarding just certain industries, let's just say the wine industry, for example, the occupancy levels during their manufacturing may be different, but for them to have a special event, it says that they have to not be in operation on the manufacturing side for a special event. So I guess what I might question is, is the manufacturing side with the more restrictive occupancy level going to be a negative to having a special event, which already states that there shall be no manufacturing during a special event? And maybe you can clarify whether that's something you guys are looking at, or you guys are gonna enforce? So, question.
So that's one of those tough ones to wrap your head around. I will start by saying this is a zoning ordinance planning document. Obviously, building has their building code, planning has their planning deal. The challenge I was facing with the way it was proposed and written was, it was stating something that was a little confusing, but what seemed to be in direct conflict of what our state building code is. So it would have, well, yes, it seemed awesome and great and a really easy thing for people to do when they step up to the planning counter. When they went over to the building counter, they were gonna be told, no. They were going to be told, you're not exempt, you need to get a building permit, you need to change your occupancy of your building. I have building here today, our building official, to kind of provide a little bit, or to try to educate a little more, because I know it's a hard thing for me to wrap my mind around. or to try to educate a little more, because I know it's a hard thing for me to wrap my mind around. But if the building is built for manufacturing, it has like a different ratio per square footage of people that can be in the building because of how the building was built and designed. So now, if you're taking a building that was designed for manufacturing, you were, you provided plans to build it that way, and it was approved that way. And it's safe to have that number of people in that building for proper egress, all that good stuff. Now, if you want to say, I want to have an event, I want it to be an event center. If you had originally come in with that proposal to build an event center, there would have been a lot more requirements in regards to how that building was built for the building code, the ratio of people per square footage changes, and it allows you to get up to that number you need to be. But there are a lot of additional requirements that come along with it. As it's written currently, and what you guys saw at the last meeting, and we threw in there, the way it was written was that a fire marshal and a building official would go out and in essence, design that facility to meet or get close to meeting the building code, so that they would be allowed to get, I guess, a pass, or to be safe enough to do these events. That really isn't how we should be doing business. One, I think I shared that the cost to do that with the special event permit we did as kind of, they call it the guinea pig, it was very costly to utilize staffing at that level. And I think us as a city, in our current fiscal situation, we don't have that kind of general funds or tax dollars to subsidize our building division to allow that to happen. We try our best to get up to 100% cost recovery. And in order to do that, we have to pass those costs on to the fee. And when I ran it as it's currently written, that fee was going to be unreasonable for one of these business owners to do what they want to do. So we streamlined it, we pulled those inspections out from building and planning, we put in the indemnification to protect the city, and tried to create a product that we know we can implement, that we know should be affordable and easy for the applicant to get through the process. I know with Mr. Bridge's process, it took a long time. It was a totally different ball of wax, that thing. I feel that we've streamlined it enough and taken out a lot of the components that made it more challenging. Now where we could complete one of these, I say in two weeks, probably give us three, because we're really short in our planning division. But I think that we're offering a solution to something that is very challenging for communities all over the place, when in reality, our only other option is to turn a blind eye, like many other jurisdictions are doing. And that doesn't protect anyone. It doesn't protect the city from liability, it doesn't protect the business owner. So if I answered your question, I hope I did.
Yes, and you know, I can tell you, Christie, from my observation, you have made a difference in some of these businesses here, okay? And I understand, it was a learning process. I have to say, full cost recovery wouldn't have been fair for someone while someone's learning, okay? And I understand that, and you stated that. My issue is, and I get it, so I'm complimenting you and your group for moving us forward for the wine industry, this has taken way too long. But at the same token, if you had a barrel room, and you're not going to be having manufacturing, and they take, let's just make up this number and just say, had an occupancy level in your manufacturing room of five, okay? So you're going to have a pickup party, and you want to show off your operation, and you walk through 20 people through your barrel room, but there's no manufacturing going on, but the occupancy level said five, okay? How do we work with that so that we're not finding people or making, letting someone go in and be a spy and saying, hey, they're not complying with their permit, so to speak? Because that happens.
Right. So what they would want to do is, if you read the way this is written, they wouldn't be exempt. If their building plans, say, they can have five people in there, or 10 people, or 15 people, and they want to have 20 or 25, they're going to go to the next step, which is their path or avenue or tool to be able to do the event that they want to do. And that is going to be the special event temporary use permit. That is a simple application, they will submit what it is they want to do. It's good for one year, and they get it at, in my opinion, a bargain cost, because one TUP is $400, around there. And they'd be getting one TUP for 12 events. So they're getting quite the discount, because typically, they'd be coming in for every single one. The other component of it is, our typical TUP process is kind of, takes a bit of time. It gets routed through every city division or department. The special event TUP would solely go through the planning division and be signed off. So that's why the turnaround time would be much quicker and cleaner. The other component is, a lot of people have said, what happens at the end of the year? If I haven't changed anything, I'm not doing anything different, why do I have to pay you more? And that's where I think as staff, we are going to, this is new. So we're going to have to evaluate this and see what types of challenges might pop up throughout the year, and determine, can we reduce the fee and do an ministerial approval, or reapproval, or renewal? Can we change that a little bit? I really want to clarify, staff isn't here to make things harder. I get a little frustrated with the comments that we're trying to block people, we're trying to stop people. We took something that we would not have been able to implement. I would have never been able to get the building official and the fire marshal to go out for two inspections and get a TUP approved. It would have been a nightmare. I would have heard complaints, I would, it would have been back here in your seat to try and get this cleared up again. We gave you the best product we could come up with, given the challenges, and in the end, you have something you can work with. We are not opposed to revisiting it. So we try it, see how it goes, and if there's things where we can improve, areas where we can improve, let me know. I'm going to listen. You can talk to Steve, you can talk to anyone who sat in my office and talked to me to talk through these things, that's what I am there to do. So I gave you the best product I could, flexed around with it a little bit, and talking to the various players, but we do have other responsibilities, and trying to get flexible when you have all of those responsibilities also. There's just some things I can't budge on. And for this one, it was only one thing. So I think this is a good workaround, but again, I know it's not giving everybody 100% of what they wanted.
Again, the resistance that people feel and the businesses feel, it boils down to personalities, okay? Your personality is one that is flexible, you're looking at ways to say yes. And we've run into people that have personalities that, just like the statement was made at the council meeting the other day by one of the public comment speakers, "The letter of the law and the spirit of the law," I love that comment. And I think you're trying to work with the spirit of the law, so we can stay within compliance, stay within our health and safety code, because we don't want to put anybody at risk. But the same token, it's no good if we shake them at the counter, and they go out of business in a year, and the longevity of us getting sales, tax revenue, or any kind of revenue, or any kind of selling lompoc, so that other people will come here and actually invest in lompoc and move us forward, and we can get some quality places to go and shop, which I think that's what we're all starving for, okay? Instead of the bottom of the barrel, things that no one wants to pay for, so no one does pay for, and instead, we're encouraging a different demographic. If I could, the, we're talking about the special overlay, and I'm going to address this with the mayor. I have a number two and three, can we just move down to one more question that I have for Christie, or?
You still have the floor, so I guess.
Thank you, I'm just asking, okay? I don't want you to scold me, thank you so much. So the other one on number two on this red liner is two and three. We got "Per lompoc municipal code, section 17.1.28.030." A lot of numbers, man.
I know.
And "A temporary use permit shall not exceed one year from the date of issuance." And I'm referencing this to everyone, and Christie. "The temporary events shall cease on the last day printed on the permit, and all related equipment, supplies, projects, and personnel shall be removed from the site." I'd like to reference this, you made a reference to one word here, and it says here, "If no changes to the facility have occurred, for someone that wants to do it for a second year, the applicant may apply for administrative and administrative across the counter new temporary use permit, which shall be approved for a 12-month period." And I'm...
Which may be approved.
No, I got you, I got you, okay? I'm not done yet, okay? Gosh, anyway, no, no, but what I, I guess the question is, I'd like to see if we can change that to exactly the words you said, which would be ministerial, so that people won't be afraid to come in, and they'll come in. If you guys need to do a walkthrough, Christie, hey, so be it. We're working together, instead of the resistance and the flexibility, and following the letter of the law, which is basically by throwing the most stringent guidelines at some of these businesses. And you know, I want to compliment you again for being able to work with this parameter instead of this parameter, because I say, it just boils down to personalities. That's where the resistance comes in. So I would like to make some sort of proposal. I know we're not probably at public comment yet, Mayor, is that correct? Do I have to wait?
No, you should make your recommendation now, so that when the public gets up to comment.
I'd like to recommend that we change the administrative word to ministerial for number two and three on our red line copy, which means it would be a ministerial instead of administrative across the counter, new temporary use permit, which shall be approved for a 12-month period. And again, this says, "If no changes have been made." It should be easy for someone else to do this and have events.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can we get confirmation what you're looking at?
Yeah, I think what Councilmember Vega's actually looking at is the handout from the, Mr. Bridge.
That's correct.
Okay, because when you say red line, you're referring to a document that...
All of us got it, so I figured we all knew.
The public has a scene.
Oh, so sorry, okay, okay. All right, well, that's what I'm referencing, so...
You're referencing the handout.
What's that? The handout that was given to us on the dais.
From...
I didn't know who gave it to you.
Mr. Bridge, Steve Bridge handed this out, Steve and Brandon Bridge handed this out.
It's a special event overlay zone, it was a red line.
It's the red line copy, and it's item number three.
Two and three, yeah.
Just so you know, staff did not receive a copy of it. So they are looking at it right now.
Okay, sorry about that, I didn't know.
You're asking for the red line portion to be added, which says, "If no changes to the facility have occurred, the applicant may apply for a ministerial across the counter new temporary use permit, which shall be approved for a 12-month period." I believe staff is going to review that at the moment to confirm whether or not they can accept that language.
It just couldn't be "shall be approved." It should be "may be approved," because there are reasons it may not be approved.
Okay, so would you accept that one?
Where's the "shall" at?
It's, says, "New temporary use permit, which shall be approved for a 12-month period."
Shall not exceed one year, is that what we're talking about?
Says, "Which shall be approved for a 12-month period." The staff is recommending "may," because it could potentially be denied.
If, it kind of has to be "may," because if it's "shall," then that means once the permit is issued originally, it lasts forever. If the word is "shall."
Okay, that sounds good.
And then it's not temporary.
Anyway, that's my motion.
All right, that's your recommendation for a change?
Recommendation for a change, then we can have a public comment, then I can turn it into a motion, is that correct?
We'll turn all the potential changes into a full motion after we have a discussion from council, and then open to public for comment, again. Councilmember Mosby?
So... Number nine, I think it's just a little too broad, where it says, "Any damage to city facilities, i.e. curb, gutter, sidewalks, wheelchair ramps, etc., shall be repaired and replaced as deemed necessary by the city engineer. The repair and/or replacement shall be paid in full by the applicant." So I think, after it says "any damage," should I say "caused by applicant to city facilities?" Otherwise, any random event, you could be billing the applicant for, potentially, so... Is that something staff could...
I think you're right, that "any damage," so if there's some event that's unre... There's some incident that's unrelated to the special event, we probably wouldn't, probably wouldn't be fair to make the applicant pay for that, like an earthquake. If you want to change it to "any damage caused by the applicant to city facilities, etc., shall be paid in full by the applicant."
In understanding, the applicant includes their visitors, their peeps, that would be...
Would it be appropriate to say "caused by the event," or "caused by the applicant's event?"
Or "related to the event."
Or "related to," oh, yes.
I don't really like "related," because somebody could say, well, I was looking over here, and I went over there, and...
Any of those are legally acceptable, it's just gradations of what risk of liability it puts the city under for paying for the damages. So right now, it, the way it reads, the applicant would be responsible for an earthquake. So maybe it does warrant adding some modification there? So if you want to say "caused by the applicant," that is legally acceptable. If you want to say "caused by the applicant's event," that works too, or "related to the applicant's event."
Okay, I don't know. The other council members have a...
"Caused as a result of the approved TUP." Something along the lines that relates it back to, you know, it's literally trying to make sure it locks it down to what we've approved, not randomness, and that's, so...
Yeah, I don't see any, I don't see much difference in "related to the TUP" versus "related to the event."
Okay.
"Caused by the event" is a little bit different than "related to."
"Caused as a result of the approved events in this special event temporary use permit."
Sure you're not a lawyer in future, it's pretty...
Too worried, the lawyer said it was too worried.
I think "caused by the applicant" would be simple enough.
Councilmember Vega?
There's a word here, and it says, "That shall be paid in full by the, or as deemed necessary by the city engineer." Maybe you guys can clarify and quantify that, why it says "city engineer" on that, on that same thing, same subject that Councilmember Mosby's speaking about? Or if there's another verbiage we can use?
"Any damage to city facilities shall be repaired and/or replaced as deemed necessary by the city engineer." So that's there because someone has to determine when the work is done, and how much work needs to be done, so...
Can we just put the city?
I'm not good with...
Can we just put the city, sir, instead of the engineer? We've had engineers that we have in the past, that have, they come up with different estimates, so, depending on what it is.
If you put "city," then it's going to be the city manager, subject to the city council overruling him, so if that's what you'd like, you just want to say "city."
I guess I'm asking the question, what's, is there a more appropriate way of putting that in there, okay? Instead of saying "city engineer," are they responsible for everything that is rented out in the city? Or for special events?
I would say maybe it's in there, because the city engineers and Public Works Department is where the city engineers lie, and it could be written in there, because they do all of our curb cuts, gutters, sidewalks, so they're the fastest, and they would be the ones to respond to fix it. And so any public infrastructure, they're the ones that do it. So they would either have the supplies, know how much it's going to cost, and be the ones to do it. So that would be why they're written in there, at least in my opinion. It talks about wheelchair ramps, curbs, gutters, sidewalks. Those are all their, their area of expertise.
Got you.
Mayor?
Yes?
It says, "The city engineer," we have one city engineer. We have a position... We have a position that is the city engineer, so it's not all the engineers.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much. We didn't know how many engineers we have here. So that's why I asked the question.
No, no, we have other engineers. We just have a position that is the city engineer.
That's their title, city engineer? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions, concerns, clarification from staff before we open it for public comment? All right, public comment is now open.
Steve Bridge, resident. I want to second what Councilman Vega said, in that Christie has been extremely helpful. And in fact, some of the changes that we've just discussed had been agreed to. So if those changes are made, the red line process that was suggested in my insert would probably be no longer needed. And with the ministerial approval, we can agree with that. I, I would like to have item two A, adding the minor changes to configuration are to be tracked by the applicant. And the reason that is, in the existing TUP we have now, we have that requirement. We send it into the city. Sometimes it comes back approved. Sometimes they get overcome by events and are unable to get back in a timely fashion. And so the event goes by. So, if it was tracked, minor changes and, and documented, it could be available to them, so I'd like to see that. I, I'd like to kind of step back and talk about common sense. So, the, the original goal of the special overlay was to minimize TUPs. The clause that the Building Department, the Fire Department, whoever it is that's saying has to be in there, essentially says almost every event will have to have a TUP. Using your example, twenty people, twenty people's not that big a deal. But the minute they step in the barrel room, you now are in a special event. Because all the manufacturing building codes are based on the worst-case use of that section of the building. And therefore, by default, and every winery guy in here knows what I'm talking about, you're coded for that worst case. And so, we're saying everybody's got to get a TUP for almost every event. So if that ends up being the fact, and that's where we go, then I would make a request that you increase the number from twelve. Because you've now taken and said what we thought was going to be larger, you know, we had fifty people coming or something, and you've now shrunk it to a much smaller number. Not you, but us, the royal you. We will shrink it down to a smaller number. So I would suggest that maybe twenty-four or something, because you're saying that events, you know, we get a bus pull up, and we would all love a bus to pull up in front of our place, and we would love to walk them in the barrel room, but that will be a special event. And so, you're saying I can only do that once a month. So, if we've got a compromise on the, the building code and recognize the value of that, which, you know, I don't like tilting at windmills, so I've given you my best shot on that. But then, if that's the case, then I'm pleading you up the number from twelve. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Peter Work. Together with my wife, we are farmers. We grow grapes in Santa Rita Hills. I'm a winemaker together with my wife Rebecca. We make wine. We do the same thing as Steve Arrowood is doing. We do the same thing as Kathy Joseph is doing. We came here with dreams and with passion, and with money in our pockets, to start up businesses here, to plant grapes and to make wine. And to promote this, not just in the valley, US-wide, worldwide. We have customers around the world. I've got twenty-five cases of custom wines made for a wine store in Tokyo going out next month. We're here because we love what we are doing, but we're here because we love to work hard. When you guys were sleeping, some of us were up at twelve o'clock picking grapes, just a few weeks ago. We work hard. What I'll encourage you to do as staff and as elected people is to do the best you can to support us in our effort on promoting Lompoke. Recently, I listened to the mayor talking about how difficult it is to get businesses to city, and I appreciate the efforts that the mayor is doing. But let's try not to push businesses away. Yes, Rebecca and I, we can move to Paso. We can move to Buellton. It's not that hard. I don't think you want us to move. Do the best to keep us, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Tom Doyle, and with my wife Kathy Joseph, we own Fiddlehead Cellars. I wanted to comment on paragraph fourteen, the indemnification provision, which I think is problematic for several reasons. One, I don't think the indemnification provision should be applicable at all. However, the way it is currently written is it requires indemnification and hold harmless agreement by not only the applicant, but also the property owner. Which means unless Morris Sabani agrees to accept the terms and conditions of paragraph fourteen, we would never be able to have any sort of a special event. And so I think it would be very onerous on us to require that not only the applicant, but also the property owner sign off on this indemnification agreement. And the practical effect of this is, yes, of course, you're going to get insurance coverage to take care of this liability and potential exposure, which will require us to name the city as an additional named insured on our policy and incur that premium cost. Morris Sabani will have to put the city on his policy as an additional named insured and incur that additional cost. And so I think that's very problematic to have this indemnification provision include the property owner. And then also, it, the, the sub-paragraph I speaks about acts on the property and adjacent to the property. Well, what does that mean, adjacent to the property? I think that's a very vague and a very uncertain term, and could create the potential for unknowing and unknowable exposures. So, I, I think, again, the provision is unnecessary, and the provision, certainly the way it is written, is very onerous and very expensive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Arrowood, I'm a winery owner. I live in Lompoke. Personally, I have a large tasting room with a large occupancy, so I can have many events that, you know, if we ever have a defined definition of what event is, I can have two hundred people every single day at my place, and they're drinking wine, then it's not a special event. It's not an event, it's a day in a wine tasting room. However, it seems like ten of my friends are gone. Ten wineries have left Lompoke in the mon, in their last year. They've gone out of business, they went to Los Olivos. Ten of them, I don't know if you knew that, ten. And many others are considering leaving. Because business is not easy, and you look to the future, and you're like, oh, we'll get food in the ghetto, we'll get this, everything will loosen up, and everything ends up tightening up, okay? Go back to when we started this thing, a lot of people had events. We had a little piece of paper that said what we can and can't do, and maybe we were breaking the law, I don't know, okay? But we were doing nothing different than what your staff went to Buellton and Paso and said, what's going on? I was like, they're having, they're, they're running wineries. They're having little events here and there. We don't, not going to bother them, because they are the hundred percent engine of Paso Robles. It wouldn't even exist without wine. So, is that illegal? You know, is it unethical or whatever? This paperwork, I know you guys had a lovin' about it, but this was created by a bunch of people whose number one goal was no risk, zero risk. Ridiculously zero risk. Let's sit around a table, what else could he go with? What, they break the curb? We're going to charge them, break the curb? Come on, who would come up with that stuff? It's crazy. Indemnification, what Fiddlehead said? You're never going to get landlords to indemnify guys, to have three extra people come and taste, fall over, run into a tree. Now Morris is bankrupt. This is written, I think, not on purpose, but to stop every event, okay? And then to sugarcoat it up a little bit, like, let's do pro winery. This is totally anti-winery. You should go back to when we were at the beginning. Four years ago, we should have never even written anything. All we did was just tighten everything up like this, the wineries. And what's really crazy to me, weed. I'm not against weed. I stopped smoking when I was a child. But I think everybody should have access to weed, and I think that it shouldn't be legal. But you, we, Lompoke, we're open arms to weed. I mean, come on. Weed is not going to create Paso Robles. Paso Robles is one of the most famous towns in the country because of wine. Napa, Sonoma. I don't think we're going to have Lompoke. You can get weed in every city in the state. That's going to be great. People aren't going to drive around to go get weed. They don't drive around to get Budweiser either, so...
Steve, your time is up, so wrap it up.
All right, bye.
Thank you.
It's a hard act to follow. Good evening, I'm Kathy Joseph from Fiddlehead Cellars. After fifteen years of being in the wine business in Santa Barbara County, I had an opportunity to invest in land anywhere. And it was my dream to go to a place where I could help be part of the growing recognition and the importance of the district where I wanted to land my business. So I invested in a hundred and thirty-acre vineyard like Peter and Rebecca. I'm a farmer. And my whole business is created around creating a unique opportunity and experience. You know, the thing that makes us different is that we're one-offs. Every, every one of us is different. We promote ourselves that way. And it's why we can sit side by side and make an exciting wine district. But our events also are one-offs. And if I have to come up with a design of what I'm going to do for a year, sometimes I have three people, sometimes I have eight, some want to taste some barrels, some want to sit down and talk about it. And every, it, it, it's my, my, my joy to create and personalize the experience of everyone who steps foot in my winery. And it's, it's what makes us successful. We try to share that experience, and we try to give back. We're asked to support the hospital, the police department, Farmer's Market, Boys and Girls Club. And we receive five to ten requests for free experiences every single day. You know, welcome to our world. So, we want to exist and stay in business and share the love of our experience, and we want to have, help grow and, and make the Lompoke Valley an exciting place to visit and, and survive in our endeavor. It's a lot harder work than you can imagine, and it is, has been a lifetime, forty years for me. And I look to your support to help us be successful. So thank you for your ear and your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening again, John Lynn Lompoke, resident with less voice. So I think the point was very well made earlier about having a property owner indemnifying an event. The whole goal of having a lease with someone is to separate yourself from the legal liability of that business. And in a fell stroke, this sinks you all in that. I'm not acquainted with very many property owners that have alcohol liability insurance. And the way this is written, probably, I should have already bought that. This indemnification should definitely not include the property owner. When you come in and get a business license, the property owner says, you can have a business license, because you're leasing the building, but the property owner doesn't say, and I accept all the liability for you operating your business. There are a couple of things that were taken out that I think are... And by the way, the city attorneys comment with regard to that one correction are absolutely correct. There are a couple of things that were taken out. Under item number two, in the, in the first draft, it said examples of types of special events are art shows, live music, cigar pairing, et cetera. I would certainly like to have that put back in, because it explains what it is that you can do. And similarly, in item three B, we talk about it ends in three hundred and sixty-five days. And then, in the laundry list at the bottom, we talk about it ends in three hundred and sixty-five days. I think the laundry list could be rather dramatically condensed. The laundry list says that you have to remove any special equipment. It's a warehouse. Why would you remove it? Why wouldn't you just put it away until the next time you were going to use it? I don't think we want to be in the business of telling people what they can and can't do in their warehouse. The point about renewal was outstanding. That solved an issue. We could have a single statement at the top that says the applicant shall be compliant with all federal, state, county, City of Lompoke regulations and ordinances, including the building code, the fire code, and the city noise ordinance, and eliminate three lines in one sentence. If you read this, it kind of looks like you have one page of yes and one page of no. And I think the no could be shrunk down and have exactly the same thing. It says you have to have your gate unlocked. What it really should say is you have to have your gate unlocked if your exit door exits into that area, because otherwise you wouldn't want your gate unlocked. If I could have another ten seconds, since I can't read very fast. Said all designated park spaces shall be available for parking and access drive-throughs shall be clear for emergency vehicles at all times. So, those are my thoughts on compressing some of it. I thought I got here with seven copies. I got here with one, so I'll give it to the mayor.
Hello, Mayor, members of the city council. First off, I'd like to say that that's one of the prettiest timer rings that I've heard in some time. I'd like to have someone perhaps make a motion on adopting a new timer sound. That one was so pleasant. A lot of you know that I kind of work in the wine industry, but I also represent the chamber. I'm the chairperson of the Chamber of Commerce. And while we don't have every single winery as members, we do have several wineries and tasting rooms as members. And it's not rocket science to figure out that we need to do any and everything that we can to advocate on their behalf and to support their interest. And I think the word that I'll bring, that I want the take-home to be, is uncertainty. And the idea of what we can or can't do, unintended consequences of putting perhaps additional regulations that far surpass what some of our neighbors do to be competitive, really creates uncertainty here. And I want to explain it in this way, for the wine industry too, which I think they'll understand. On the surface, no one would assume that it's cheaper to do or open a tasting room in Los Olivos. No way. Why? It's, you know, three or four times the cost square footage, just way more expensive. Yeah, but there's a benefit of additional traffic, but there's also a ton of competition. We, we're so much cheaper here in Lompoke, on, on the surface. We should be an incredible draw to be bringing the wine industry into Lompoke, but yet we're not. So, what is the deal? Why can't we attract these wineries here when we have so much to offer? I would like for you to consider that it's the accidental uncertainty that's placed upon the industry. I think you could go around the room, and I think there's been some talk back and forth. There's been talk from city staff to say, well, we're going to try this for a year, see how it works. And we all understand it's an experiment. But there has to be somewhere, somehow, that certainty is placed at the top for this industry. Otherwise, it's more expensive to wait six months to be uncertain, or to wait a year, or to just not know whether something's going to work out, or just worry that some staff change is going to happen. change is gonna happen, or to be stressed out that the city is saying, look, we have all of these rules that we want, but we're telling you, we don't have the staff or the money to implement it. Well, then, one suggestion might be, well, what if the wine industry just decided to disregard every single regulation in this? Who would enforce it? So maybe focusing on certainty for the industry should be part of this discussion. Anything that we can do to clarify that we do support the wine industry, first and foremost, we start with, yes, we can. We'll do our best to help you get open and sustain your business at every single department at the city. Maybe that's a discussion that we should continue to have. The Chamber is supportive of the wine industry. That'll never stop. They're gonna be here for a long time, and I hope they are successful. And I hope that you will all support them with more than words. Thank you.
Thank you. Going once, going twice, closing public discussion, and bringing it back to council. Council recommendations, besides the ones already made by Councilmember Vega? Councilmember Mosby?
Again, I wanna thank staff, because this is something we were gonna bring back at a much later date. Kind of at the last minute, October 3rd meeting, I kinda stuck Steve Bridge's document there and said, hey, let's just do this, and let's get it done faster. So this was something, it was a process that we were looking at potentially doing for another month, month, month. And we kind of shifted gears real fast. And I do understand that Ms. Alacorn's really trying to make a difference in that department. And I had several other businesses had opportunities to deal with the department and the building official, and how they've gotten to the level of how can we get things done. Been a real change that's out there. And as far as referencing the county and getting a CUP in the county to do a tasting room, many of the people there are five years plus and probably a half million dollars to try to get something there. It is a much simpler process here in the city to get a CUP. And what we're trying to do here, and staff's trying to do here, is not allow what has been happening for all these years in the tasting rooms and such, which has just been kind of, can we get by with it on the weekend and nobody will find us? So they're trying to get to a way of yes. And I know a lot of this stuff seems like there's a lot of rhetorical in here, and you're just referencing a lot of it as just, hey, you gotta go by the rules. So there's only a couple paragraphs that are really in here. And I think we started originally from, what, three or four years ago, it was a multi-page document. So it's getting down to a couple paragraphs. So I think we're getting closer and closer to getting there. I think we can get to a document that we can work with. If we need to make changes down the road, you know, please stay engaged and involved so that we can. Let's get something finished. Let's try to get something solid that we have a backbone we can keep working on. And I think that's what Mr. Bridge and the group, and I believe all the signatures on here, there's quite a few signatures on here, are trying to stay in tune with this to get a working document. And I think Councilmember Vega said with his motion, or changes that he had there, I'd like to put my changes in there that says caused by the applicant on number nine. I think crossing out the posted component that you had in there, right? That was recommended. The indemnification process, the attorney says this is what we need to do. I will agree with the attorney there. If this is what we have in our other CUPs, as he, I have no reason to not believe his statement, then I'm gonna have to go with him on that level. I know it's... When I've had to file for CUPs, I've actually had to do title searches on the property to prove that I was the owner of the property so I could sign this CUP. So as tenant and owner, I had to verify those things. So I know the landlords are with CUPs, are supposed to be signing them. I assume we still do that, right? So in the wine getaway area, the landlord signs a CUP as well?
Yes.
Last I knew, yes.
Okay. The... Let's see, what else were we looking at that was something that seemed more like a...
He's adding the phrase, on three, if no changes to the facility have occurred, the applicant may apply for a ministerial across-the-counter new temporary use permit, which may be approved for a 12-month period. That needed to be added.
Yeah, Councilmember Vega's, but doing a "may" not a "shall"?
Yep.
And I think we have a decent backbone in there. I don't think anything else is a real deal breaker with other comments that we had in I see some of the red lines from Mr. Bridge, but I think we can get by with what we have here with staff. I don't know if council sees any other...
Councilmember Mosby, I'd just add the changes that Christie and I stated at the beginning of this item. The typo for line number one to say standards for special events that are exempt from a temporary use permit?
Yes.
And then the changes Christie made down in 3A about calling it a special event temporary use permit instead of just a temporary use permit. And then add after that, under the process described below.
Okay.
And strike through in consistent with chapter 17.5.44, temporary use permit.
Is staff, here the recommendation's made by public? Is there something that they feel, anything else would make it, you'd give back to us if we have something, and hopefully we can expedite it? But give us a good backbone. I think we have a good backbone here. Anyhow, that would be my motion. If somebody else has some others to piggyback on top of that?
Councilmember Cordova?
I would take into consideration comments made by our residents in regards to the removal on number three, leaving it just the temporary event shall cease on the last date printed on the permit, period, and remove the additional verbiage related to removal of equipment and stuff like that. That's really not necessary. I think a good point was made in regards to if it's a warehouse, they can store whatever they want in their warehouse.
I think you're probably looking at the handout from Steve Bridge.
No, I'm looking at our handout.
Attachment 18? What number is the...
Three.
Item three, section C, item three. So section C go to...
Oh.
Yeah, section three, section C, then section three I, and then number three.
Got it.
Maybe you can reference, what were you thinking about items? What were you thinking, somebody had a piano in there or something? What were you, what were you guys thinking that, related to the event? All related equipment, supplies, projects, and personnel shall be removed from the site.
I think that's like thinking if someone brought in a stage and musical equipment and, you know, additional chairs and tables and that type of stuff for that special event.
So you were...
It kinda goes without saying, their special event permit ceases. It can be a little redundant, the statement. Obviously, if your special event is over, you probably should get rid of the stuff that isn't part of your day-to-day operations.
At the end of their permit.
Yeah.
And so if they don't come back and renew the permit at that annual renewal, then the expectation is because they're not doing that anymore...
Shouldn't be there.
It shouldn't be there. That's the recommendation.
Yeah, that's why it's in there.
Councilmember Cordova?
The temporary events shall cease on the last date printed on the permit, and all related equipment, supplies, projects, and personnel should be removed on the site. I think it's a little redundant. I think it's understood. I think a good point was made. I don't think it's necessary. However, if the remainder of the council doesn't agree, then majority rules, right? The other portion of it was, there was also a comment about leaving the example on section two, adding back the example verbiage. I think that is helpful.
So under Mr. Lynn's handout, which no one else received, I will read it to you. He recommends, under section two, to put back in, examples of these types of special events are art shows, live music, cigar pairing, pickup parties, barrel sampling, hand bottling, fundraising for nonprofits, and other similar events where the main purpose is to market the products that are sold at the business. My question to you is, that's under those not needing a TUP, so that description may not apply very well to not needing a TUP. Those more likely require a TUP if they exceed occupancy.
Occupancy, yeah. So you have a couple options there. So I removed it because I felt that it's misleading to the community. They may think, oh, I have a pickup party. I'm cool. I'm exempt. And then, and they might have a few of them. And then all of a sudden, somebody complains, and they're reported, and we go out and we say, okay, sorry, no, you're not okay. Here's a notice of violation because you had a pickup party. And they say, no, 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 it's in here. It says pickup party. And I'm like, yeah, but you can't exceed your maximum occupancy. So I took that out for that reason. I didn't wanna have examples that would mislead them, part one. Part two, I didn't wanna have examples that pigeonhole us into only those types of events would like make people think, oh, if it's not these types of events, then there's no way I would be exempt.
Okay. Does that help clarify? And I think that there's a dual benefit, really, if I'm understanding it correctly, too. There's a dual benefit to having it removed. So I do understand that. And I was not looking at John Lynn's handout. I was looking at the packet where it's listed under number 29, which was the original handout that was provided by Mr. Bridge. And it's in our packet. So I wasn't looking at John Lynn's. I was looking at that. But you're right, John Lynn did reference it at the podium. That's all I have.
So do you, are you still requesting the change under three and looking for support for that?
I see the intent. I think that it is a dual benefit to the wine industry as well as the city in not pigeonholing anybody into a particular type of party. I think the way that number two is written, it just leaves it as a special event.
Right. I was referring back to item three, under 3C33, where you had asked to consider removing the last half of that sentence. Before we moved on, I just wanted to see if you wanted consensus or not.
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Councilmember Vega?
Yeah, under the removal of equipment, I think I'd like to come out a little stronger on that. I think it's unnecessary to require the removal of the equipment for a certain event because that's part of their business. Just doesn't seem reasonable that you have to clear the floor when that's part of, that's part of the experience, okay? To see the equipment, to see things there, okay? So I think that that would be a detriment. You wanna clear it out for what reason? It's a winery, you know? It just seems like it's just excessive. So I'd like to make that motion there, that we take that line out of there, that they have to remove all related equipment. I'm sure they're gonna have safety lockouts, they're going to do everything that's gonna be required within their permit. So that's one recommendation. As far as the indemnity side for the property owners and the applicant, I have to side with the wineries on this one. I don't think it's necessary to have the property owner sign an indemnification. I think the property owners have gone through all the permit processes, they have all their insurances, the landlords, when they rented and they leased to the wineries, they understood this is a business. I want it to be supported. I want it to be successful. It pays my rent, it gives me money, they make money, we all win. So I'd like to see if I can get a consensus on removing the owner part of that on the indemnification, because I think it's on the applicant.
Back to your request regarding item three, which Councilmember Cordova pulled back, it's not about removing their current equipment, it's about the additional equipment related to the special event at the end of their annual permit be removed if they don't come in and renew their permit for the next year. So it's not about every event, then they have to remove the equipment out of the space until the next event. It is literally at the end of their 12-year permit, if they don't come in and renew it, then anything related to that special event should be removed from the space.
I don't see the verbiage saying that. I think it's just verbiage that's being added. And I get all related equipment. It could be to the special event, but I'm interpreting it as being related to the wine.
May I make a quick comment to Mayor and Councilmember Vega regarding that item?
Yes.
One concern I do have, and I think it's pretty obvious once I describe it, is if the event actually is outside, it does need to be removed. Whether it's the city having their event with the food trucks, or it's this event that's outside, since we know there are gonna be events outside as well, I would have to strongly disagree that that all needs to be removed. So I don't know if we wanna clarify that, because I see what Councilmember Vega is saying, but if it's outside, absolutely all needs to be removed.
You know, I think, Brian, I think that's exactly what everyone's expecting, but I think the resistance is coming from somewhere else. And I think that probably the overreach on fear factoring and making overreach on rules, I think, is unnecessary.
Councilmember Vega, if you wouldn't mind, what if we just added in to clarify that it's all related equipment, supplies, all equipment supplies, blah, 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 related to the special event temporary use permit, not part of the day-to-day operations and functions of the business?
Yeah, that clarification would be appreciated. That's all I'm saying. You know, I just think it should be separate and clear, not vague where it's subject to interpretation.
Yeah, we can make that change.
Okay, I'm all for safety and for the planning manager, the same thing. I get it, the fear factor, but I wanna make sure that we open the door, and let's open it as wide as we can so that they can know, hey, guess what? This is what it means.
The last of your requests?
Well, that was, those were my requests. Okay, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby?
I'd be willing to modify my motion to accept what Christie has added...
Okay.
On number three, but I'd like to ask some clarification about removing owner on 14. Is that something, I mean, they still, the owner still has to sign the TUP, correct?
The owner has to sign the application.
The application, right, for it. So the owner already has a responsibility component already?
The owner has a responsibility component simply because he owns the property. Any accident or damage that occurs on that property, whether it's during a special event or any other time, the owner is going to get sued.
So I think, I think the verbiage is okay, and I think the protectionism component, the fact that we use it, I did realize the city uses it in our CUPs and others. I think that we probably should not treat one differently than the other, the TUP or the CUP component. So I think it's important that we take the city attorney's advice and keep 14 in there.
Councilmember Vega?
Respectfully so, but I still disagree. I think it's clear, you just asked if the owner has to sign the TUP. He's aware. He's already aware, he's given constructive, been given constructive notice, they're going to have an advent. I think it's up to the owner if he wants to do an additional indemnification between his tenant and somebody else and everybody else. As you know, anybody can sue anybody for anything at any time, so it doesn't clear everything, but this clears the city. So why are we defending something that's already in self-defense so that we can let these people go through with the least amount of resistance? And it's just a clarification. I understand both sides.
I'm sorry, there is no clapping or cheering. I appreciate your support, but we have to not be demonstrative. So we have a motion on the floor from Councilmember Mosby with the changes either recommended by certain council members or staff. I am gonna look to staff before I ask for the vote to make sure we have all the clarification we need, and there's no question about what may or may not have been agreed upon.
I mean, we've talked about a lot. I've been taking a lot of notes, but... I've been taking a lot of notes, but if we want to repeat all those, that's going to...
We don't need to repeat them. I think the record is clear.
I have been making notes, but...
The record's clear. We have the video, and it's good from the city attorney's perspective.
Okay. It's good enough for me before I repeat everything that we just discussed. So the motion's on the floor. I see Councilmember Starbucks' light is on.
Oh, I'd like to hear you read all of these before I speak.
Oh, I could do it.
I, I fully anticipate this.
Would you really like me to do that?
No.
Okay.
I was just going to make a comment that I would give you a third. In my world, I would normally beg for forgiveness before I went through this, but at this point, I want to put something on the books that we can continue to move forward with. So if you're looking for the vote, I would be your third.
I'm happy to give it a second and appreciate the staff's willingness to work through all this and recognize the things we can and cannot do. So I, knowing this is such a huge part of this, I think it would be valid to go ahead and ask for a full vote so we can record the council's full support of this. So I would ask everyone to register a vote at this point, unless you have something else you'd like to say, Councilmember Vega.
I'd just like to say one more time to the council. I understand liability. I understand indemnification. But if we want to send a note and we want to send a message out that we are business-friendly, whatever that interpretation was, I've asked the city to interpret it. No one could give me a response, so it's basically just words. So if we want to send a message and we help the city's coffers, we're looking for the general fund, we're looking for sales tax, we're looking for revenue. As somebody mentioned, the marijuana industry was approved for revenue, and if they're successful, we will make more revenue. So do we want to send a message to the business community that we are what you want to interpret as business-friendly? And all I ask for one little change. Take the property owner out of it. Let the applicant sign the indemnification. Let the property owner sign the TUP. They have constructive knowledge, and I think these guys are going to probably think, "Wow, maybe there's something there." Okay, in a year, you don't have to wait to find out whether the city finds it reasonable to allow these special events, or we're going to triple the price for everything. So that's what I'm asking. It's my final plea to you guys, are we business-friendly or aren't we business-friendly? We have the, the ability to make those changes right now, regardless of whatever legal opinion is out there. They're there to give us their strongest legal opinion, but they know that it can go both ways. Thank you.
Councilmember Mosby.
To ask the city attorney again for clarification. So when we have a conditional use permit, the owner signs something similar, the same thing as this, correct?
That is correct.
So the owner's already signing this with, with CUPs. We have a number of wineries, tasting rooms are under CUPs, right? So they're already, this document is already signed under the, under the conditional use component already. So it's not, it's not a uniqueness. It's not something new, different. It's not a selecting out. I was concerned that it was a selecting out on this, so I, it's still, I don't think it's saying we're not business-friendly. The owner's already signing these documents. So I don't, I want to stick with my recommendation of the attorney and my regular motion.
And I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. I appreciate the back and forth, but let's go ahead and take a vote on this. Wait, can you tell me what you're voting on? All of the changes that we recommended that staff agreed they got for the special event overlay. Thank you very much. You're welcome. All right. And now I call for a vote. All right. Back to the presentation, just to make sure we haven't forgotten anything. Yes, that is the last part of it, isn't it?
Wow.
So...
That is correct.
The last part we need is approval for additional funding?
Oh, we don't need the council to approve the additional funding because it's within the administration's authority.
Okay.
We know that you want to make the changes that are, that the funding is needed for, so we're just going to go forward with that. The next step tonight would be to number four there on the list of recommendations on the first page of the staff report is, oh, I'm sorry, not number four, number five, to introduce the ordinance adopting for the first reading of the new zoning code update. We are holding item number four, the, the general plan resolution, until we come back with the second reading for the ordinance. And the reason we're doing that is because we need to add some changes to the general plan into that resolution.
I'm sorry, if you're going to have a conversation, I need you to move into the lobby because it's overpowering our, our discussion. So thank you, but, thank you. Could you finalize that comment, please?
Sorry. To simplify, we need to make some changes to the general plan resolution so that can be adopted when we do the second reading for the ordinance. So tonight, what you can do is introduce the ordinance, which is staff recommendation number five on the first page of the staff report. And then we will, then staff will bring back the ordinance for second reading along with a new copy of the zoning code with all of the changes that the council has directed us to make. So it will be the final version. We'll bring that back for second reading, and at the same meeting, we will bring back the general plan resolution, which is number four here, with all the changes that need to be made to the general plan. And the addendum to the environmental impact report that will need to be adopted, well, no, the addendum to the environmental impact report, that will come back at the meeting when we do the second reading as well.
So we need a motion for item five on the staff report or E on the agenda.
That's correct.
And that's all we're doing because we're holding off on four, and we've already done the first three things.
That's correct.
Awesome. Okay. Councilmember Mosby.
So we have under resolution 167019, you have on here, adopting the sixth addendum to the 2030 general plan EIR. Did the, did that?
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry, Councilmember Mosby.
This is adopting the, six addendum to the 2030 general plan EIR.
We're coming back with that.
Okay, but that's under ordinance 1670 parentheses 19. That's the number five.
Right, but we're not doing that tonight.
We're only introducing that. We're not, we're only introducing that ordinance tonight. We're not adopting it, so that's fine.
Introducing, understand that there's corrections yet to be put in it, correct?
Right. Yes.
Okay.
Well, not corrections, but there's changes. We're introducing it with all the changes the council has made.
Okay. Not as written, it's applied.
That's right.
Okay. Not as per the packet that's here.
No, because we've made many changes tonight.
Because we've made many changes to what's in the packet.
All right. Councilmember Cordova.
So does this mean that we'll get a final copy to review when we adopt?
Correct.
Yes, that's going to come back when we do the second reading. And apparently, staff believes that we'll have that ready on December 3rd.
That's, that's the goal, is to come back December 3rd if... How much time, clerk, how much time does that give us?
December 3rd this year?
Yes, 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 yes.
So in a month.
So that gives you...
Three weeks, maybe, for...
No, it gives you two weeks.
Two weeks.
Because you have Thanksgiving in there and then...
No, it gives you two, well, it gives you less than two weeks because you do have Thanksgiving in there. You also have the, the holiday this coming Monday.
Yeah, I don't know if we're going to be able to make that.
Right.
We could do the 17th, but then we won't be able to adopt it because we need a second meeting, right? A second reading?
No, no. We, we're doing the first reading tonight, so we only need one more meeting, and that can be December 17th.
Okay, 17th is fine. I just, I'm, I'm personally getting married. I will not be here on that day, but Ms. Alarcon will be here to, to do everything.
That's okay. You just need to have the report done before you leave.
That's correct.
Yes. Now we understand why his goal was December 3rd. And, and, you know, if you magically have it ready by two weeks and want to get it on the December 3rd agenda, more power to you. But we will take the December 17th date so that it's done right. So we, Councilmember Cordova?
Well, I was just going to say that I'm okay with the December 17th date. If the report is ready by December 3rd, what are the chances that we can get it at least because, and not have just two days to look at it?
I think the goal, Councilmember Cordova, is to give you about a week, but no, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be ready for you to read on December 3rd.
Well, even a week is better than two days.
Right.
So you're leaving. You got to get it in anyway to not trigger any kind of indemnification. So, so with that said, I'm just wondering, would we be allowed to, as council, get that at least a week in advance, knowing that it's coming on the December 17th date?
If it's sent to council, it would be available for everybody. It has to be available for everybody if it's sent to council.
But, but the answer is yes. As soon as it is completed and finalized, then it can be provided to a council and the public.
I would love to see that happen.
Our goal, our goal would be December 6th. Completed and reviewed? Completed and published.
Yeah, that's much more than a week, and I don't know if we could meet that deadline. I, the thing is, is I don't want to overcommit when I haven't talked to our consultants.
But you told us December 3rd, and now she's giving you three extra days.
I'm okay with getting it on the 10th, at least a week before.
We will do our best.
Okay. All right. So we have a goal of a week out from the December 17th meeting, when it will return. We're having our first introduction. I will go ahead and make the motion to have the first introduction, first reading by the title only of further reading waived of ordinance number 1670 parentheses 19. Any other part of that that I need to clarify?
Just to be safe, why don't we, in case any more changes need to be made on December 17th, why don't we continue the public hearing to the 17th as well?
And continue the public hearing to December 17th. But it doesn't interrupt the ability to approve it on the 17th.
That's correct.
Awesome. Okay, so Councilmember Starbucks.
Yeah, I'll give you a second, but we're really trying to get this done by the first of the year in accordance with staff.
Yes.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion. We have a second. We have as much clarity as we can possibly get at this point. I would ask for a vote. And that passes 5-0. And we will now adjourn the meeting to our regular city council meeting at 6:30 on November 19th, 2019.
Well, I just want you to know that most of the wineries walked out of here saying they're relocating. There you go.
Oh, there it is. I'd written over it.